Is that blink the whole time or will I quit?
Nope, it'll quit.
Okay. Oh, now we're good.
Now we're good?
Now we're good.
Okay.
Jean says we're good. All right, I'll call this meeting of the Mercer County Commission to order. Is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we have a couple.
Okay.
We would like to add the auction house. And add Carmen to the signature cards for the Mercer County accounts and transition date. And then also we'd like to remove delinquent accounts off of the road issues. And I believe Jamie has.
Yep, I'd like to add minimum maintenance sign to the road issues or down to other business, whatever. And I'd like Todd here before we discuss that.
Okay.
What else did you have? Auction house, Carmen's signature.
Cards, transition date.
Yep.
And then remove delinquent accounts from road issues.
Oh, remove it?
Did you?
Oh.
We got, we got the minus.
Oh, from, from road issues, I did the.
And then add Jamie's maintenance.
Yep.
Minimum maintenance.
I got that. Okay. I didn't have your third, but that removed, okay.
Okay, I'm missing one. Anything else? On ones? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'm mo'd to approve as amended.
Motion by Jamie. Was there some?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none. Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
I vote aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Oh, and aye. That motion passes. Minutes from March seven.
I don't think there's many. I don't have the minutes.
We don't have them there.
They were sent out in your other packets. I'm sorry. You guys want another copy?
I didn't see any when I read through them on.
No, that was in my stuff. I'll go make a copy.
Okay.
I don't, it doesn't matter to me. And I didn't print them out at home.
Well. Did we need clarification on the weights from last minute?
They were six ton in the minutes.
It was in the minutes?
Six ton, yeah.
Okay.
Like what I read of them, I would approve them.
Do you want me to pull it up so you can?
No, I just didn't, I know we had talked about that or Ken had called, so.
Is that six ton per axle?
Yep.
Right.
Six ton per axle.
These are not bills. They're, well, they're payroll and stuff like that. I don't think people want you. Yeah, I don't think people want you to vote whether they get paid or not.
Vote?
I'm good with the minutes and the emails, so if you guys are. Do we want to start bills?
Okay.
Wait, no more writing anyway?
Yep.
Can't fall asleep as I see that.
Do you see it, Jean? Six ton?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Rick to prove the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion, corrections, or additions? Seeing none. Rick?
I vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
How about aye? That motion passes. And we're looking at bills.
God.
I hear, I see them.
Okay, you see them?
Yeah.
Okay. I always get distracted. I want to look something up, but in the meantime, I got like three messages and fifty-five emails. So they'll catch my eye. And then by the time I get around to what I originally wanted to look at, I forget. What was I gonna look at? I wanted to look at this road. My parents. These are my favorites.
Yeah, I know. But I mean, I thought about, what do you, I mean, you can't buy a Williams like that.
I tell you what. Oh.
I don't know.
I was thinking the same thing. It's like, what are, what we did, we did do that.
Yep, I know, but it's still a just. Well, I think in some cases, it's actually a upgrade for some.
Well, I know it is. I know from previous, uh, thing that I can talk about, but thirty amp power supply.
Oh, it's all different things everywhere.
Right, yeah.
Try and track it all the time.
It's installed.
Or the groceries are gone.
No. I'm just looking at the dairy and I'm like, gee.
Any idea what a thirty amp power supply is for?
Kind of rhetorical question because I knew you wouldn't really answer it.
I don't know if anyone here would know that answer, so I'm not picking on you. I'm just saying.
It's all good. I understand.
I know what a thirty amp thing is, but what it's for.
For what?
Thirty amp, what was it? Thirty amp, uh?
Power supply.
Power supply.
That, uh.
I didn't know if it was for the radios because it came from electric communications.
Supply would be a, like a.
For what?
Like a ra, one of the radios in a patrol vehicle because it came from electronics communications or whatever, so. I don't know.
Yeah, well, that, that should say there absolutely no description, so you're just wondering what for.
I actually wondered the same thing too.
It's all you.
I was wondering maybe an inverter or something like that.
It's generally their internal part of the radio, so. I guess. Okay. I guess we can question every bill, but.
I can't do it, Captain. I need more power.
Need more power.
I'll write the numbers down here too. I won't remember what it is.
Drive bay. Dive bay. Oh, dive bay. Okay.
You okay down there somewhere?
Well, I'm losing it.
That drive thing on wheels, you know?
Yeah, I put an R in there. Making up my own words here. Doesn't care, doesn't matter.
I just gotta make sure you're not having a stroke or something down there.
Can't say again.
Look at me and smile.
I want to do that. Come down and touch your nose.
Quit picking on the elderly. Not only do we make up our own words, we also read words and make up words.
Do you see colors too?
Do you know your colors? You gotta ask.
Yeah, there's many shades of gray.
Oh, boy, are you colorblind?
Like fifty or what?
Oh, boy.
I know someone who's colorblind, one eye, and is an electrical engineer.
Oh, God.
How can you be colorblind with one eye?
It's not a good combination.
He is certified. He is, yeah. It's good. And that's what I said. To him, it's all shades of gray.
Yeah.
He'll tell you that. That's how he knows colors.
The shapes, yeah.
That, that's gonna be a microfolding update, but that was significantly higher because we had to do some.
My dad and two uncles are going for it.
She was upset about it, but it.
Like red greens.
And it has the heat, so.
Yeah, my dad was fixing a light in the bathroom when I was probably about eight or nine. He's like, what color is this wire? I'm like, red. Okay. What color is this one? Green. Okay, don't mix those. And my dad, really? Should you be doing this? Uh, so it's fine. Then my mom comes in with her camera and her white flash, takes a picture, and we both just freaked.
Is it like?
She's like, what, what?
Is it customary for like one department to bill the other department for like the snow and fuel and stuff?
Is it like the landfill?
I'd say it's for the landfill.
No, the road department is billing the courthouse for fuel for snow removal and cinders.
I don't know.
Maybe that's just what.
Maybe so.
The only thing we've ever discussed was landfill.
We also have record breaking snow.
This is true.
But.
I mean, it's an internal charge, so it's just coming in from one account to the other, but, right?
Nah, I'm not sure. I wonder if Jim filled up there until I, at the.
No, uh, it says fuel used to haul snow from courthouse parking lot.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're back here moving this pile.
Just have to watch that, I guess, for budgets for next year. Next year, Jim's got enough for a few.
Is it typically the road department that places on the board or?
Well, if it gets too piled up back there because that's where the Sally Court is and then extra parking, so.
So typically the, like, the maintenance.
The maintenance guy.
And stuff will, I guess, be too.
Correct, yep. They, they were taken out from the, removed from the pile.
Yeah, there's been a lot of snow over to around the county. Not, not just the county doing it, but all the cities have. It's been an expensive winter.
See, this one is a little, almost a little easier to handle. It just says groceries. Instead of itemized and saying, you know, Cheerios and Rice Krispies or.
Yeah.
Does it say county days?
Mm-hmm. And then backup is on the county days during the legislative session. That's good information.
Can't see the week for a while.
Glad somebody's thinking of spring, summer.
Is there a reason this has to be billed separately? Hauling snow from the courthouse.
Yeah, we were just talking about that. So it's, I'm pretty sure it's pretty uncommon just because of the amount of snow we received this year. So I know that, um, and it's like the landfill or any of his time or use or anything like that. So I'm thinking that he's doing the same thing in regards to the courthouse.
The sheriff's office had fuel in there too, I guess. If they fell over there, it looks like they.
Yeah, they fell over at the county shop. So, um, Sam asked me to be here when we put this on the agenda. Do you guys want to just call me up when it comes up if you want me?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be fine. All right. I will be in my office now. Okay, thanks, Carmen.
Do you want to change his typo or do it matter or not?
Yeah, instead of.
We'll cross it out and make the adjustment.
I'm just curious if there's a reason that we have to itemize it.
Well, I know for the landfill, we do it because it's an enterprise.
Right, because it's separate.
But here, I mean.
You know, we can.
I guess.
I mean, like, does that just the first time that I've been, I've dealt with that, so.
One, because the road department has its own mail levy and the courthouse is under the general, that's still only, I mean, if we were all under the same fund, I don't think it would matter, but.
So is the money, oh, that's, that's what I'm.
That's what I'm asking, yes.
An answer I'm trying to find. So.
Right.
So the snow removal from the courthouse, that gets billed to a different account than our normal road account?
It should be, yeah, because the courthouse should be under the general because there's no like mail levy specific.
Okay.
But then also I know Carmen's working on that grant that the state is passing out.
Oh, that's right.
There's snow removal, so that might just be reimbursed. So if we show that that, yeah, that, you know, we were billed for it, yeah, then we get reimbursed.
Okay, so.
And that's, that's, I mean, and it's fine because it just seemed a little.
Right.
redundant and odd that we're billing other.
But that's all because of that.
Well, I mean, and like Travis said, if they're two different accounts, then.
Got it. Thank you.
That makes sense then.
Yeah, I, I forgot all about that.
See, that's why we got you in charge, Travis.
I had to recover from the drive team.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, boy. It's gonna be one of those days for all of us, huh?
Well, I mean, you get into March and you wake up on a Monday morning and it's negative twenty. And then the next day it's forty.
Kind of fair.
We don't know how.
It was raining and sleeting on the way here.
I mean, you just.
And daylight saving.
And daylight saving. I was getting to daylight saving, so like.
What day is it?
What day is it? What time is it?
My kids are unaware.
See, this we get reimbursed or don't? This inmate, or is this ours? Or is this for the inmate medical?
As fresh as it is about you.
Pardon?
Inmate medical.
Is that for the, uh, federal employees or for, okay, I'll.
We don't, there's no bills for the feds. Like, we don't see it. It gets billed directly to federal, and we don't see it.
So that gets billed directly to them?
Yep, we don't touch that.
All right. Uncle Sam takes care of that.
That's why we've never seen any, okay. I was gonna say, they're pretty healthy. I haven't seen any bills come through here. There. Make you happy.
Yeah, true. Well, you got less aids.
True.
Three less aids.
True.
As I'm gonna go for.
Three less aids.
I am.
No. Just an interesting way of.
Five by ten G.
Yep.
Yeah, like you said, well, it's well.
Testy for herpes.
Yeah.
Yep.
So is this a set fee or?
A holy cow.
I don't know if we should have. As, I don't.
Because we were wondering, because that should be EMR and IEMT too.
Which, but we had someone else teaching EMR, so it's, I don't know.
So we're kind of.
Not sure.
Well, and the other thing is there's twenty twenty-one dates, twenty twenty-two dates, and it's almost the end of the first quarter.
That's a long time.
Yeah, I mean, it's five hundred dollars, but it's.
Five hundred dollars? Is that the training? Yeah, there's an email back and forth from Gwen and Ashley regarding that information. I don't, I wasn't involved in that conversation, so.
I mean, if it's a set fee, it's a set fee. The detail is nice, but if it's literally an hourly rate and it comes out to that, but. I don't know what thirty-three times what would equal five hundred. That just doesn't make sense.
Right.
I, I think Ashley could probably verify that information or, I mean, state how that was all calculated. Yeah. Did you guys want me to set that bill aside?
Do you want to set it aside for more information or is it? I think if we just got clarification for the next meeting, I think that'd be fine. Like I said, it's a five hundred dollar thing, and I'm just wondering if that's like an annual.
No, I think it was just a specific training. I don't know if that's something that they're gonna continue doing.
I think it has to be recertified every so many years.
Right.
But I don't know who would need to be recertified each, you know, if some, everybody got it done now, and so they just have to do it every three years or now because we've hired new people? Isn't already done?
But then like Travis said, it was old dates.
Right, because some of the, I mean, twenty twenty-one, that's a long time.
Oh, because this is for, this is for EMR. Don't we have somebody who has EMR?
That's what we thought, but I think maybe it's just CPR.
Well, somebody in Buella, but that says EMT on the.
And you want EMR though?
On the voucher, it says EMT, but.
And don't you want EMR, right?
I mean, I, I. We were always training EMR.
I think we need to set that one out, Sam.
Okay. I think Don has some of the best handwriting I've ever seen.
Mm-hmm.
It's beautiful.
Around there certain people, it's because they live in the age of all time.
Right?
When you're a kid learning craftsmanship, your teacher goes, have you ever thought about being a doctor?
It's nice for computer charging now. Still set for.
Any complaints or changes?
A lot of great murders.
Do they teach you the characteristics and not just?
I just tell you to save her.
Yeah, did you guys?
Why, I were waiting for more. We're not done yet. You got one more. You got one more. I take it that's the Verizon one?
West River.
West River.
West River, oh, okay.
Close enough.
Could you give it in check from the next day?
It was a pretty nice one.
We should kind of get a capital credit check from them, don't we?
West River?
Yep.
Club cash.
Should've been a pretty generous check.
Yeah, we get it from the senexes too. Then Rough Rider, then Rough Rider.
It's been good.
Yeah?
For those.
For those. Is there a motion to approve the bills, except for that one? Motion by Rick to approve the bills as presented, except for the one we excluded, second by Jamie, any discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
I'll vote aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Moving down to other business, Vision West membership.
Okay, I mailed that out to you guys since we, because that was on.
Snowmageddon six point eight.
In your packet for when we, yeah, canceled that, and I believe it was Buster who's been reaching out in regards, it looks like we had been members in the past, or the commissioners have been members in the past. I do have a copy of it, if you guys don't have it, we do, if you wanna take a look at it.
It's on our portfolios, and it lists us as a voting member, so we've paid it in the past, but I don't know what.
That's right here.
What amount.
Yep, which one?
I actually got what you sent me.
It looks like we were under the leader membership level, because it was a thousand dollars is what we've paid in the past, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, you're looking for a motion on that, or?
Yeah, a motion to approve the, you said it was the leader, leadership category?
Yeah, I believe it's the leader membership level.
Yeah, leader membership level.
And Buster was asking about this?
Buster was asking about it, I, I'm actually going to their meeting tomorrow, they got one in Kildare, they've had them in, uh, Buella and Hazen.
Yeah.
Did you have a copy of it?
Yeah. They have a list of items that they help with, and it's pretty much the western part of the state. I think a lot of the states. So anybody in their territory, if they're a political subdivision, they're included, but we need a membership fee to have before we made.
Individual all the way down.
Is it something, I haven't had a chance to read, is it something we can continue, or?
I think so, it's, they do a lot of outreach programs, they work with the youth, they help in financing and funding certain economic development stuff around the western part of the state.
Packet, I've got some, irons on my plate that.
Right, you can only read some last, right?
Well, I wanna, I saw it, but I didn't get to that one, that's why I'm asking for clarification.
Travis, have you ever put the RFPs in this vision list? Advertising, it's part of a.
It's part of our package.
We can get ability to advertise that, or things in RFPs, and there's.
I don't know if we can help, but we should be using them.
I just, we.
Yeah.
Three letters have jumped over them.
Well, just like, you have an opening, job opening, or, you know, certain requests or proposals, there's certain entities that are in there that are contractors and things like that, so they would see their newsletter, and, you know, I don't know.
So for Republicans?
For Republicans, yeah.
Why do I have to say?
Just another advertising spot, I would, is that the one that was canceled?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's kind of the list of the stuff that they do.
I'll make the motion to continue that leadership membership level, I guess.
Motion by Jamie to continue Vision West leadership membership, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eliza, any discussion?
Is that, are we gonna do the? Vision, which one was it again, the visionary, the leader one?
The leader one, it'd be the thousand dollar one.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
I think it's got a lot of good options that maybe we need to look at.
We're probably.
To utilize a little bit more, yeah.
Any other discussion? Jamie?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Rick?
I'll vote aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. I go. Okay. Uh, budget transfers?
Okay, I put that on the agenda because I just had to make some adjustments to it, so.
To the one that we did before?
What's that?
To the one that we have played.
Yeah, because you guys wanted us to create a fund specifically for the Prairie Dog and the Household fifteen oh five.
Oh, gosh.
So we had to show that moving from that account into the road department, so instead of coming out of aid to secondary, we moved it into those other accounts, so if you guys want to take a look at that.
Gotcha.
It's the same amount, the funds haven't changed, the amount hasn't changed, it just shows.
Just their location has changed, right?
Correct.
And that was so we could track them better, right?
Yes, so that.
And that was based on what we did.
Yep.
Is there a motion to approve the budget transfers?
Oh, a motion.
Okay, motion by Jamie?
I'll second.
Second by Eliza, any discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
I'll.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Looks like we got a bunch of recorder fees.
Yep, she's got December and January on one, and then February, if you guys want to pass those along, one of them is for a total of three thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars for February, and December and January is a total of two thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and sixty cents.
And are those just what we collect, or is it some of that come from the Andron?
Come from what?
The Andron website, or is it, are they all combined?
I believe that's just what Shannon collects, I'm not sure what comes up from that.
Move to accept recorder fees.
Okay, motion by Jean to accept the recorder fees?
Oh, sure.
Second by Rick, any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
I'll vote aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Sheriff's fees?
Sheriff's fees for February are a total of thirty-one thousand five hundred forty-six dollars and thirteen cents.
So you're saying the sheriff's more popular than the recorder?
They get a little bit more money.
This goes to the.
General fund, because they're under the general.
I move to approve the sheriff fees.
Motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Rick, any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
I'll.
Eliza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, Zap delinquent properties?
Yeah, we did get a letter from Zap, and they are wanting to purchase the two properties that we had sent them. The parcel numbers are here, I've already typed up the deeds, and those are ready to go, so they will be purchasing those properties.
So we just have to make a motion to approve the dollar per lot sale?
I believe so.
Yeah.
What was the original, sorry, what did you say, Travis?
I said we'd have to have a motion to approve the sale of each lot as a dollar to the, to the city of Zap.
That was gonna be my question, it was a dollar, right?
Yeah, there's gotta be some monetary exchange when you.
Do we have to do each parcel individually, is that what you also stated?
Hmm, I didn't state that, but, um.
We can just do it in one.
I think we could just do it in one, yeah. Unless one, you're not gonna yell.
How many were in Zap, two?
Two.
Two.
Boy, in that motion, is that gonna have to have what, lot numbers are?
Do you guys want legal descriptions and parcels?
Well, I'd say I'd make the motion to approve the sale of Zap, but.
Of what?
Yeah.
The parcels are listed on there, but I can go get the legal.
I got the tax ID number, but outside Cindy and a few others, nobody knows what those mean.
And they're purchasing each one for a dollar, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Legal description and parcel numbers are listed right there.
So I'll stumble through this.
Okay.
You can do it, Jean.
I make the motion, or, yeah, I make the motion to sell properties, Lot Six, and the west twenty feet of Lot Five, Block Three, well addition, three nineteen Iowa Street, Zap, North Dakota, for a dollar, and east eighty feet lots, or the east eighty feet of lots, one, two, three, Block Two, at one ten Second Avenue, Zap, North Dakota, to the city of Zap.
Okay, motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie, any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Rick?
I'll.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, joint powers agreement?
Um, Terry sent that over to me, thank you, I believe he just needs you guys to make a motion and approve it.
Joint powers with?
Oliver County.
Well, I was just saying, we need to state what our joint powers agreement is with Oliver, it is with Oliver County.
Okay.
Okay.
What is?
Is this?
Is it for the nine-one-one position?
That's what I was asking, I asked.
Yeah.
Oh, I think they accepted.
Do you want me to, I'll, I'll read it.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Uh, this agreement is made between Mercer, between the county of Mercer here and after referred to as Mercer, P U, the address, and all, and the county of Oliver here and referred to as Oliver, regarding the operation of the enhanced nine-one-one communication system and continuing to move to the next generation nine-one-one capabilities, this agreement also provides that Mercer maintain and act as Oliver's public service answering point, and provide for Oliver and Mercer to share as needed nine-one-one coordinator services. Did you get all that?
I did, so.
Yeah.
That's what the joint powers agreement is.
But it doesn't state how much monies it is, because I know before we were talking about just, we weren't sure if I was gonna do it hourly, or if we're gonna do it one day, some.
That we would agree to.
This is, we're gonna simplify it where we're gonna set a charge on hourly, they're gonna.
It'd be one flat rate, okay, all right.
Yep, and then the, I don't know if this includes this, this paper includes this or not, but, yes, it's on there, they get a, their piece app services and the nine-one-one services are.
A flat fee?
Flat fees also.
Okay, all right.
It's on the bottom.
I guess this, so then it's this, I know it's a little different because of what you said, it wasn't called flat fees now, but is it in general, is this kind of a regular rule, this is, this isn't a new joint powers agreement, this is a pre, pre.
What Terry explained it to them when we were down there was that they, the nine-one-one is pretty much, that's funds that are, you know, in the, and then when they do all their, any works they do, like dispatch, or, you know, anything that they do back and forth, it was all billed hourly, so it was always a, a lot of extra work and nightmares, so he went back, asked them to go back and see, they put a bill together, or a proposal together, how much they were spending, it was twenty-six thousand, I think is what he came up with, so we, we did a four-year agreement at thirty thousand.
And it's, yeah, it's that line, item five here says the amount.
So the, the agreement didn't change, just the.
Services are basically the same.
So services are all the same, it's just a payment is changing, rather than being hourly, it's a flat fee.
Okay.
So that's easier for bookkeeping purposes.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the revised joint powers agreement between Oliver County and Mercer?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Rick, is there a second?
Also.
Second by Jamie, any discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
I'll vote aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, duplicate check?
Um, Don asked me, she needs to, um, she needs to get approval for a duplicate check warrant, number five four five one seven, for the amount of forty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents to roller. I'm not sure why.
It's usually they've lost the check or something, yeah, so.
It's usually they've lost it, yeah, yep. I move to approve the duplicate warrant check for number five four five one seven, in the amount of forty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Motion by Eliza, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie, any discussion? Seeing none, Eliza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
I'll.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Um, PERS public safety plan?
Okay, so, the, um, this was discussed quite a bit down at the county days, there, it's been on the, it's been a hot topic at the legislative session, that they wanna make changes to the PERS from the, we're doing the defined benefit plan as of right now, and they wanna go to the defined contribution plan, so I thought this would be a good idea, since there are gonna be changes with that coming up, and then also changes within our financial software coming up, that this would be a good time for you guys to start discussing, maybe looking into the public safety plan for the law enforcement and for the correction staff, this might be a good time to transition into that, it is a little bit more the contribution, but if you guys decide to do that before budget time, you can possibly discuss with employees and see if they'd like to make that extra contribution, or if you wanted to wait until budget discussion, but I just wanted to provide you guys with the information regarding that plan, so you can look that over and start thinking about it.
So not necessarily a decision to be able to give us a chance to review it?
Nope, just some information, yeah.
And, so they're under the current county, county plan, the defined plan, but there is a specific one for law enforcement?
Correct, and firefighters.
Or, correction, and firefighters, so.
Yep, yeah.
It gives them a different retirement date, and, but like you said, it's a little more expensive.
Correct, so another thing that will be changing if that house bill does go through is that there will be no disability within that defined contribution plan, so say if, you know, law enforcement was on the job and they hadn't been fully vested, then, and they get hurt, there's no benefit for them, and there's no contribution to them for it.
Under the current plan.
That's if, well, that'll be under that defined contribution plan that they're possibly moving to.
Currently, right now, they're at a rule of ninety, right?
Yeah.
So your years of service added plus your age has to equal ninety before you can retire, with the law enforcement and the, and correctional officer, they can retire at full retirement at fifty-five, which is huge benefit, plus a huge way for us to try and recruit some more people to.
which is huge benefit, plus a huge, um, way for us to try and recruit some more people to come here because right now we're really scrapping for correctional officers. So, to me, this would be huge for us to be able to do something like this for some of our county employees. I realize it wouldn't be for everybody, but it may help with some of those essential workers that we have. And this is common for.
Sure, I thought, I was visiting with Terry last night a little bit about it. And I'm not up to speed on all of this yet, but I thought, he was looking at another one that was, there was, I would like to find out more about it, but there was another program that he was talking about that we, we should, uh, if this house bill goes through, we should look into opting out of these and going into one, uh, as countywide.
Yeah, oh, as countywide, because Terry.
Yeah, it would've been more than just law enforcement too.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, it would.
And that one I'm not aware of. I'm not, yeah.
And I don't know any of the details, I just, we just briefly chatted about it last night. So, it's something that, another thing just to, to look at, put on the radar of all these things that we're talking about, so.
It's super important for us to start looking at this because we wanna make sure that we do the best we can for our county employments, employees for retirement because it's looking like it might change. And I wanna make sure that we have the best we can for them.
Like at the county, county meeting down there too, they, they discussed it too, it's like typically our counties pay less than other people. So, we recruit people by using better benefits.
Right.
So, that's something that would, like you said, super important to look at.
And, and typically, if, regardless of what chamber comes out of the bills, typically they go into effect in August, so we'd probably wanna make any changes prior to then, otherwise we'd be after the law and then you'd be subject to whatever they changed.
Might be good to do the preliminary budget.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that if we were gonna opt for the defined, um, contribution plan for whichever department, you'd wanna make that change prior to the new law going in effect, if it's gonna be a worse, like, benefit.
Yeah, because they are talking about closing the defined benefit.
So, not even allowing.
Correct.
New people into it. So, what I'm saying is if that's the way we go, we'd have to make the transition before the new bill would go into law, which is usually the first of August.
And then you also just, in the, put it in the back of your mind too, that our financial software at the moment wouldn't be able to handle splitting into two different, um, packages. So, since they are looking into that, I would suggest that, you know, maybe somebody be hands-on with that in the commission as well to make sure that that's gonna be a possibility moving forward as well, with that financial software. I, I really appreciate you bringing this up right now, Sam, so that way we keep our eye on it and we make sure that that's something that can flow through. Yeah. With everything. I think it's a good time to start discussing it and. Thank you.
Okay, so you'll send that information out, um, via email or?
Yeah, I thought I, I thought I printed off for you guys.
Oh, no, you did, okay, I wasn't looking through my packet.
Okay, we got it.
Yeah, we got it, got it, never mind. Look further Travis.
Colors, colors Travis, there's colors. I tried to print in color.
I can see.
There's two, there's two colors on there.
All right, we have about five minutes. Uh, auction house, update on that?
Yes, so, um, Chip and Linda did confirm and come and pay the dollar for the auction house and they were, um, are, did state that they discussed with the city to take care of the specials, so we will go ahead and, they had until the fifteenth to confirm with us and we already, you guys already moved to approve the sale for a dollar, so.
Okay.
He came in and paid that and then.
Came in and paid.
Great. He is responsible for the specials.
So, many.
The deed is done and everything?
The deed is done, we just got it signed today and we'll get it over to the recorder's office and. Thank you very much.
Good, we're done with the auction house.
We're done with the.
Yeah, with the auction house.
After almost two years.
Make sure Jim contacts whomever for utilities.
Cross that right off.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be the city, yeah. Right? Right? Chip at the auction house.
At the auction house.
If we have a couple of minutes also, that road, uh, policy declaration, I just need you guys to all sign that, we approved that the last meeting. I just never got signatures on it.
It's not on the agenda, it was.
No.
Approved last time.
Yeah. Thought I was losing my mind for a minute. Just gonna pass it around.
Welcome to the cloud.
We are struggling, we are struggling. It's a rough week this week. Time change.
Time change.
Oh, we approved it, don't we?
We can go on a sign.
This one's before. We'll sign it again, I guess.
Yeah.
Oh, we take a.
That's right.
We can take a.
I'll take a three-minute break?
Two-minute break?
I do.
We're down to two now.
Our clock is on now.
Okay, let's take a quick recess.